Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the regular session of the Board of Supervisors on May 2, 2023. Roll call, please. Mr. Veder.
Paul.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Delka.
Here.
Leyland.
Here. Would everyone please join us in a moment of silence as we reflect on our actions here today? Thank you. Would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one, is the agenda received as proposed or as amended?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Agenda is received. Public comments, item number two. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on anything that is not on today's agenda? Please step to the podium, give your name and address, and make your comments. Thank you.
My name is Tim Youngblood. I live at 6830 East Worceburn Road. My concerns today are the property of 6848 and Seth Hyberg, the zoning commissioner. On January 15th or 19th, 2002, there was a meeting where Mr. Tharp said that he would not move the dike. Then he went on ahead and moved the dike after he said he wouldn't do it. And that's one of the reasons he got his zoning is because he said he wouldn't get it, move it. He was told to put it back in place. He was given a deadline of the end of October. He did not make that deadline. He was given another extension. It was supposed to be done yesterday, May 1st. It's not done again. I called Seth. He says he's going to get it done. Don't worry about it. I said he didn't do it properly. I says, who's going to inspect it? He says, I'm going to go out and inspect it. Well, at the October, when I was up here complaining about not being done, Seth says he doesn't know anything about dirt work. So I don't, why don't they send somebody from the county engineering office out to inspect the work that's been done? Then the second note is, the Board of Adjustments meeting on two weeks later, it was, he got his permit on a deal that he would take down and lean to that was illegally put up. That's been 15 months ago. Lean to is still there. I have complained to Seth numerous times over the last six year and a half almost, and no action's been taken. Yesterday, I had a heated argument over the phone with Seth about why he's not doing anything. And he says not to worry about it. That's, you know, it's not my place to say things like that. I told him other things. Then we also had, Mr. Tharp ran a trucking business off the property that was not zoned. I had to come to the Board of Supervisors to get them to, get him to, get the Board of Adjust, or the, whoever takes care of the violations. It took Tom Little on the board to do that, take care of that. And that took four months after the, it was denied, his trucking company was denied, that they finally got it shut down to where he's not running semis out of there. I am wondering if there is a conflict of interest between Seth and Mr. Thorpe, that all these things keep happening, extensions, extensions, letting things go by. And there's no reason that a building took 15 months that was part of getting it rezoned. In my opinion, he has put out two false statements to get his zoning done in that year. And I was wondering if there's any way that Blackhawk County could remove him from being zoned that way because of supplying false information. Thank you.
You mean that Mr. Tharp, just to make sure I'm clear, he's provided false information?
That's what I'm saying. He provided false information about getting stuff. He agreed to do things, and he didn't do them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Lindell, I'll address this after our comments at the end, because we're under public comments, and it's not the proper place. But I also want to state that Zep is not there to defend himself, so.
Yes, I was going to say.
Getting on him. But I'd like to address that at the end of the meeting with some more information, but this isn't the place. This is public comments.
Okay, that's great. That's fine. I was thinking maybe we needed to coordinate some kind of a meeting or something too. But yeah, we can discuss that later. Sure, if that's all right with you. Your comments are acknowledged, so thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on something in public comments that's not on the agenda? Anyone on Zoom that would like to speak today? Okay, not seeing or hearing anymore. Years of Service Awards to employees with 20 or more years of service. Mr. Veder.
We have two awards to give today. One is to Brian Snook of the Sheriff's Department for 35 years of service, and one is to Chad Werzer from the Engineers Office for 25 years of service.
Great. Looks like neither individual's here today, so I guess accepting, that'd be great. Thank you. Oh, I think he wanted it left in the board office, so if that, I think he called this morning now that I think of it. Thank you.
He's going to come get it.
Yes, he said, I meant call Debbie, not me, but yeah. Thank you very much, Nate. Please give them our congratulations and our thanks for those many years of service. Much appreciated. Item number four, claims and payments. This is a resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlement of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Ms. Veder.
Good morning, Board. Bill payments this week total $191,038.86. Nothing large or unusual included in that. And the payments for the 6040 fund are $69.11. Everything appears to be in order today.
Any questions, comments? All right, it's been moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Paul.
Yes.
Little.
Yes, but in the future, I'd like to see if we could possibly set up two resolutions, one for the 6040 fund and one for the warrants claims.
Okay. Well, look, I remember you commented on that. Like, that's where you'd like it placed at the same time. Okay, thank you.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Delka.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes. Item number five, receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas. Give you a brief update on our contract construction work. The bridge work continues. Point Road is going well for that bridge replacement project. Our work on Daisert Road began yesterday. Border Construction is doing that work, and that is primarily working on three structures, three bridges on Daisert, near the, just north of the quarry, replacing those bridge approaches. So that is, a detour has been in place for that. Next week, our paving work will begin. Aspro is the main prime contractor on that. They are having a subcontractor come in and start the colden place recycling. Our two roads are Beaver Valley Road from Union Road west to the county line. They will begin the colden place recycling there next week, Monday and Tuesday. That work will be done under traffic with a pilot car. And then our other project is Washburn Road from Highway 21 over to US 218. That, of course, is the portion right in front of the landfill. We have, there's been quite a bit of coordination done with the landfill. The landfill will remain open. The work will be done under traffic, except it will be one way. So the traffic will be going to the east from Highway 21 over to 218. So all traffic will be, all the landfill traffic will be rerouted to go that direction. And that will be providing a much smoother flow for the trucks bringing the asphalt, the trucks hauling out the cold, the cold milling. So that will begin, that project, or that portion of the work will probably begin in the middle of next week on Washburn Road. And there is quite a bit of signing and detour signing up for that as well.
How long approximately will that last, Kathy?
Aspro, the entire project, Aspro is, their schedule shows that they will be done by June, by the end of June, excuse me. So probably five to six weeks for both the entire project. And I'll keep you updated on that. There are updates on our website as well.
Thank you.
The last thing I wanted to talk to you about, just very briefly, is railroads. I met this morning with the Iowa DOT and the Iowa Northern Railroad this morning, out on site on our, on Cedar Wobbsy Road, just west of where we replaced the river bridge. We have a crossing with Iowa Northern Railroad out there. It is a very rough crossing. We get complaints, numerous complaints about that crossing frequently. The Iowa DOT has a program available for reimbursement to repair those, those surface crossings. It's only funded at $900,000 a year, so it's a first come, first served basis. It does take counties, or cities or counties who want to apply for the program, it does take us several years to get, to get it funded because it's a very small funded program. Anyway, we are, we have been lucky to, we've been told that that crossing will be improved, will be resurfaced by the railroad. We participate in about a third of the cost of that. That will not happen until next year. It does take about a year for these projects to come to fruition and actually get built. So that will be good news for us. And we do have several other projects on that list, but again, they will take a number of years to get funded. So can I answer any questions for you about what's going on in the department?
Kathy, are railroad crossings counties' obligation?
We take, technically, the crossing itself is no, but of course, when you, if a railroad, oftentimes, they need to raise up the crossing just an inch or two inches. We, of course, need to tie into that new crossing height with some new asphalt. And frankly, the asphalt out on C-57 is rutted on both sides of that crossing. So we generally are responsible for about 50 feet of paving, between 50 and, 35 to 50 feet of paving to connect into that new crossing. And then the pavement markings that would go along with that new asphalt.
Also, I had that call the other day on Jake Braking. Did you get a chance to contact that individual that called me?
I did talk to that individual, and I am, I have not responded back to her. I wanted to look into our number of signs, and I also wanted to talk to the sheriff's office on that response.
Yeah, because we just changed that ordinance about 18 months ago to make it better enforceable.
We did. That's why I wanted to talk to the sheriff's office about the enforcement of it. Okay, I can report back on that one. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on that, Tom?
No.
Thank you. Are there any other department heads or elected officials? Thank you.
Morning, Board. Mike Hendrickson, Director of Blackhawk County Conservation. Just wanted to share very quickly some fantastic news that we have found out about. I emailed you yesterday, but I thought it warranted just bringing it to the meeting. We did apply for, through Blackhawk County Gaming, for a grant to help offset the construction costs for the Casey Lake Restoration in FY '24. And we're very, very happy to announce that we were awarded that grant for $200,000. So we didn't get the whole project paid for, but it's a big chunk of it. So we're very happy with that. So just thought I would go ahead and bring that good news here.
Yeah, thank you. Congratulations again, and thank you. Any other department heads or elected officials?
I have a couple. Michelle Whiedon, Finance Director, wanted to let you know, we have, we do have applicants for the board position. We thought perhaps HR and I would do initial interviews, and then maybe bring finalists to the board, if that's acceptable to you.
Sure.
And then I also wanted to mention, it's time to hire our auditors again, and wondered if you would be interested in entering into either a one- to three-year contract with Clifton Larson Allen again. I think they, I didn't have a lot of interaction with them last year because I came kind of late to the process, but they did a very good job based on my past experience. And I thought that might be something we'd be interested in doing.
What were we at on the contract, Michelle?
It's technically up now. So they are interested in continuing if we don't have an RFP process. They are.
Well, what I'm, what I'm asking is, how many, have we, how long is the contract, and how many contracts have we gone through already?
Well, what I can tell you is, you've had them for six years. And I am not, haven't been able to find, we've looked all over for the original actual RFPs and bids to see how many years it was for. We just haven't been able to locate them. There wasn't a three-year contract, and perhaps there was a three-year extension. I just, I can't locate that information. I'm sorry about that.
It could have been two contracts, or it could have been.
It could have been. It could have been. We just haven't been able to find that.
Traditionally, the board has, after two contracts, usually the first three-year contract has an extension for a second year. But traditionally, the board has then put it out for RFP. There's been a good reason for that. That's just being responsible. And we have had others, this company we haven't been with us, as long as we've had other ones. So if we've had them for two contracts, I would be more in favor of going RFP. When's the contract due?
I was anxious to get it going because the earlier you get in a schedule, the better chance you have of getting it done timely. She did say they, their particular firm is inundated with RFPs right now. I do not know if they'll bid. Or if they do, it would likely be a dissignificant increase. But if that's the board's pleasure, that's what we'll do.
Is there an increase of right now that they want by just staying on?
I have not asked that question yet. I wanted, if we're not interested, I wasn't going to put them on the spot with that. But I can find out if you wish.
I know, I, I'm.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, I know I'm comfortable doing a three-year contract because they have done good work. For us, and I'm concerned about the lack of options that's out there. I know I have a close friend who's just preparing to graduate from you and I with a degree in auditing. And she's got four job offers right off the bat, right here in the community, because they're saying that they have such a shortage of people doing the work. And so I'm concerned about not being able to do it in a timely manner if we don't move forward now, basically.
Where are they out of, Michelle?
I think our, Minnesota is where most of our stuff is coming from. And I'm not sure all their offices. You know, in the electronic age, your auditors can be located different places and work together. So I'm not, I'm not certain of that. Auditor's office might know.
Her office is up there, I know, because she's made a couple of commutes.
I can't remember the city name right now. I'm sorry.
And I would, I don't know, Tom, I recognize your point, and I think it's critical. I think it's, but I think because of the situation we're in with ARPA, and this was kind of like a very unique year or two that we've been working with them, and that experience with them is helpful to us as well as with our audit and that type of thing. So I would be open to, whether it be a multi-year or one year, whatever, but something to extend that just because of that relationship and the work done already, but.
Yeah, they're familiar with us.
I would agree to extend it one year. But again, I feel that we're being responsible when we bid these out after six years. And we usually get pretty good response. We had the state at one time, and actually, the last time, state bids on it too. So there's not a shortage of firms that bid on it, and we've had some good ones. You know, they do an excellent job, the current one, but we've also had some good ones that done an excellent job too, but we still bid them. And there's a reason for it. And it's the same thing with our insurance. And there's some stories there too that probably shouldn't be told. But the rule of the thumb usually at the board is, it's a bad habit not getting into bidding contracts out when you've already given one extension. And we're sitting here agreeing, or somewhat agreeing, some of us, you don't even know if there's an increase. So I think we need some more information, and I think it should be a one-year, and then put it out for RFP.
Well, yeah, and that's something we can put on the board agenda then and vote on, I guess, on what we want to do on that. So that would be great. But okay, if that gives you enough information to.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything more in your update?
Nope, that's it today.
Anyone else? Moving on to the minutes approved for April 25, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. Item seven is the consent agenda. The following items are acted upon by a single resolution unless someone wishes to remove one for discussion.
Second.
It's a whole page of items to be removed, so nobody, all right. It's been moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Delka.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes. Item eight, other business. Motion to direct the county auditor to advertise for a public hearing to be held at 9:05 on Tuesday, May 23, at Blackhawk County Courthouse on the proposed ordinance number 77-279, from a request submitted by Sarah Barons to rezone 2.9 acres from A Agriculture to AR Agricultural Residential in order to construct one single family home at 8911 Taylor.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion to direct the Finance Director to advertise for a public hearing to be held at 9:07 on Tuesday, May 23, at Blackhawk County Courthouse on the proposed fiscal year '23 budget amendment.
So.
It's been moved and seconded. There are no questions or comments. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item C, motion that the grounds used request for Hawkeye Community College to use the Blackhawk County Courthouse parking lot on the following Saturdays in 2023, May 6, 27, August 26, and October 7, for forklift training and certification be approved, and to recite and place on file the certificate of insurance for same, and direct the chair to sign the permission letter for same. If a session is canceled due to illness or weather, it will be made up the following Saturday.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. If there's any, I think that was pretty clear. We saw the email too. If there's no questions or comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion.
Nay.
Nay. All right, thank you, Tom. Item D, motion to approve release of the request for proposal for network switches to be paid for with ARPA plan funds, as recommended by Al Yu. You want to comment on this, please?
Hi, Board. Al Yu, IT Director. Yep, these are brand-new network switches that will replace aging ones throughout all county facilities. Can I answer any questions?
Motion to approve. Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. If there are no further questions, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item nine, work session. Discussion on possible board action. The American Rescue Plan Act, county projects. I was going to say, I see we have guests here today. Was there anything you were going to speak on? A couple of guests regarding ARPA. Just asking, because I.
We're just checking to see what's going on, where we're at.
Where, okay.
Timeline, we're just trying to make sure we're on.
Okay.
And I'm glad to see our guest here.
Appreciate that.
It's timely. So we appreciate you being here.
All right. Well, I was going to, and some of the, and everybody has, may have comments or questions on where we were on this. I was going to say, one of the questions that I looked at, and I know it's come up at different times, and even Mike talked, and I talked a little bit about it this morning, was the Big Woods Park Wi-Fi project. And I know Al and Mike, and Mike Hendrickson as well, have been talking about this and working with Baker Tilly a little bit about this. And so I didn't know, just to give an update to the board on that, on where that's at, or what's going on with that, if that'd be helpful.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Al can kind of give you the details. But this all came about because Big Woods Lake Campground has Wi-Fi, and it has since we built the campground. Campers use it, they love it, the whole thing. We've gone through, we have equipment there that belongs to CFU, and they are getting out of the business. We were notified back in late fall, early winter, that they were getting out of the business, and they would be pulling their equipment from that campground. So at that time, we needed to decide how we were going to continue that Wi-Fi service for those campers. And so we started to look into it. I chatted with Al just a little bit, and he felt very strongly that, that it did fit into an ARPA category somewhere. So we went ahead and did, did the research, got some numbers put together, using the system that Al and his, his staff would like to put in there to give very good quality service. And we got those numbers, got them back to Al. Al helped write the justification, and we sent it on to Baker Tilly. And then at that point, we, we got, basically, and correct me, Mike, they kind of told us they didn't think it fit anywhere, but we really didn't get an explanation.
Yeah, well, so what happened was, we sent them the, the questionnaire. They came back and evaluated it as being a lost revenue project. I went back to them to ask them why this didn't fit into an expense category. And they, they told me, and this was an over-the-phone conversation or over Teams or something like that, and Tom Calico over there informed me at the time that, you know, they've seen these park Wi-Fi circumstances, and those, you know, essentially to him, they've seen them as a nonstarter. Well, so I said I thought there were more considerations, and we would give him some more detail. So we followed up by sending an email with a little more detail, sort of take a second bite at the end. Last email I had sent on that was in mid-March. I did not receive an immediate, or did not receive a response to that. So I sent a follow-up email yesterday on that. But my understanding is, right now, the project that was being proposed for ARPA funding was a much more robust system, a system that would work more, would work better. I'll just say, for lack of a better term, than what we have in place now. But my understanding is that it's going to take some time to acquire the material for that. So even if we ultimately end up going forward with that, it's something where we would have to, you know, we'd have to be waiting, I believe I heard, six to nine months for some of the equipment that would be required for that. So we'll see what Baker responds with in that regard. But in the meantime, the system that's being, that's being put into place by conservation is one that will maintain the status quo out there, which at least avoids this interruption when CFU pulls out. And I think I got that right so far.
Absolutely.
And the only other remark I'd make is, at this point, if we want to make this an ARPA project, we could look at lost revenue as a source, depending on where we're at with everything else, because we have committed, I believe, all, or at least substantially all, I believe we've committed, depending on where the Health Department, the Elections Office ultimately come in cost-wise, and assuming that they are approved, we are, we are going to be in excess of our expense category spending for ARPA anyway. And so that means we'd be into the lost revenue. And at that point, the, the fact that they did not evaluate this as qualifying for an expense category no longer matters. So that's something the board can consider as well.
All right. So they really didn't give a reason, though, that we understand for the no?
They, they said that it wasn't something that they saw as being health, you know, public health-related. And I, I wanted to double down, and Mike wanted to double down on the fact that, well, hey, you know, number one, this is, this is still the healthy activity that parks offer in general. Number two, we've actually got people out there working, you know, utilizing that as a safe place to live. So they're away from their families, they're trying to stop the spread. Some of these, I think, may have been traveling nurses as well.
Nurses and physicians.
So, yeah, so we are, you know, it's, it's actually, to my way of thinking, anyway, it qualifies more than even parks in general would. And that was what we then went back to later via email with. So I did not bring that specific item up when we were in a phone call. We were primarily talking about a different issue altogether, and I don't remember what that was right offhand. But I do remember bringing it up because we had just received the response then, and I expressed some surprise over the phone that, that this was not approved for an expense category.
I would add to that. I mean, there was an immediate need when the pandemic started for wide-open public spaces with Wi-Fi access so that kids could, you know, participate in school and stuff. And I know I've talked to Al about wanting to see our guest network expand and cover the parking lot here for that, you know, very type of situation. And so I think Baker Tilly's wrong on this one.
Well, and I certainly think a justification can be made. So there were times last year, for example, where we did have to go back to them and say, well, you know what, we want you to reconsider on this. One of those examples had to do with our, with our IT infrastructure. And the reason for that was simply because sometimes people miss a point you're trying to make. In that case, it was the fact that it enabled, by having, I think it was a better firewall, better security, it enabled people to work from home better. And. firewall, better security, it enabled people to work from home better. And so that's, Chris, I absolutely agree with your point. To my way of thinking, it makes perfect sense.
Well, I think that's been a point we've been wanting to push, that they need to put something in writing if they really believe that it wasn't, in fact, the case, because we talked about the congregate groups that actually stay out there, and now, and with that Band-Aid setup, that are still back first in that small setting kind of a thing, instead of the expansion of it, much like we're talking about for the space. It's not just a convenience, although most.
What parks is this?
Big Woods.
Big Woods.
Big Woods. The only thing I, you know, I'd like to make a statement. You know, every week we talk about ARPA, and it's whether Board, certain Board members, or maybe all of us, or the department heads, or even the ARPA committee, the Chair, we talk about, we get recommendations from Baker Tilly, but yet we do everything we can to go the other way and say, well, they don't know what they're talking about or that. Why do we even pay them? Or why do we have them? If we're not, if we're gonna sit here and say, well, we don't know why they said this, and we think it should be covered under this. And, I mean, it just doesn't make any sense to me. Why did we hire them then if we're not gonna go by what they say?
Well, I can only speak for myself, Tom, but then they owe us the explanation. You don't just say no, or tell Mike no, and then we're supposed to just say, okay, they say no when we've got other parks, we're considering, other states are considering other parks, and doing the similar type of thing. And there's no justification for why the no yet. That's kind of where the pushback has been.
Well, and I, I see Supervisor Little's frustration here, but at the same time, sometimes, sometimes you ask, you ask somebody to take a second look. It isn't that we're not accepting their advice. So on the, on, they've actually been quite helpful in certain projects in getting us kind of what we suspected, or maybe surprising us, and saying, well, gee, this actually does fit into a category. So we've seen some of that. So that's one reason we do have them. Another reason is that they help tremendously with providing documentation for our files and providing a means to efficiently report these projects, which has to be done every quarter. And so in that regard, they've also, they've also helped a great deal. I haven't seen, in my observation, a lot of pushback on Baker Tilly's advice. And in fact, in this case, they did give me an evaluation, but it evaluated it for a, for a lost revenue. And I can provide that to the Board if you'd like to.
No, because we really don't need evaluation for lost revenue categories, because that's at our discretion.
So, yeah, exactly.
You know, the rankings really, I mean, what's a six compared to a four, or a six compared to a nine? It, it doesn't make any difference, and sometimes it makes it look like the only reason we hired them is a scapegoat to justify it. But, you know, in all honesty, my opinion, we spent a lot of ARPA dollars and approved them, and it's a far stretch it has anything to do with COVID. And I think we can put enough twists and stretch it far enough, say, yeah, this is COVID-related, and approve it. So, I don't know.
Well, the parks were used considerably, Tom, during the COVID time.
Well, I'm not saying, but is it COVID-related for the money? Was that what the money was intended for? I don't know. I'm just making a statement here.
Oh, okay.
If you feel justifiable, then just approve it and move on.
Well, my question was just like, do we want to put it in on hold type of category? Or is it something that as long as it's on the list here, and it comes up again, we can do updates and get Baker Tilly's updated? Just asking questions.
What's the estimated cost?
Yeah.
Well, this said fifty thousand, is that?
Fifty thousand. Yeah, it's not a huge amount, but it seems like if it's questionable, and we don't want to make a decision on ARPA, we just throw it in lost revenues.
Yeah, I, that's why I was, I was just gonna say, you know, it's, why don't we just put it under lost revenue rather than paying Baker Tilly to give us another opinion?
Yes.
On it. And, and to Tom's point a little bit, as we're getting close to using, it seems to be, I feel like as soon as we're through the health clinic, we don't need Baker Tilly anymore.
And I think there's probably some truth to that, but what I'd like to do before I make that statement as advice is I would like to talk with Michelle, I'd like to talk with Billy, perhaps others, Jen, who do this reporting for us, just to make sure that I'm not overlooking something that they see as an ongoing purpose.
Okay.
But I don't think we're going to be paying them for hours doing these evaluations. I also don't want to see that recurring monthly, you know, expense that we see on their statements either.
How much are, did we allow for Baker Tilly?
One hundred thousand was the contract.
Do we know where we're at on that hundred thousand?
I think we spent around seventy.
That was the last I heard.
Yeah.
Did you hear that, Tom? Around seventy?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I just, you know, I'm trying to be honest here, but I just think down the road, we're going to put it, well, it was approved by Baker Tilly, so it ain't our problem. We did what we were supposed to.
Well, we tried, and we died with the committee, and with Baker Tilly, and to go through the process.
I think, I think some are looking at it as a scapegoat.
Well, and quite, you know, quite honestly, Tom, I don't disagree with you. I personally like seeing that a firm looks at something and says, it's approvable. So if that, if that makes it a scapegoat, guilty as charged.
No, it was to help us or assist us in the decision-making, that of a new process that nobody knew how to work through.
I remember the, the argument from the, the previous finance director was that this was an insurance policy on how we're investing these dollars. But we're getting pretty close to a lot of that risk being mitigated, and I think we are close to being done.
We're getting there.
Yep.
Lost revenue category just becomes ours for the most part, so. So we're all right just to leave it on where it's at and continue discussion, or thoughts from the Board?
I mean, I'd like to see them moving forward, you know.
I agree. Let's do it.
Is it something we can do? When you're talking about this Band-Aid approach that you're using now, is there, is it something we can take advantage of now and still do the larger scope?
Yeah, it absolutely is, because what, what we're putting in there is, yeah, for lack of better terms, I guess it's a Band-Aid. We're going to try to keep the service at status quo, but it is a very inexpensive version of what, what we could, what we would have had there, or we will have there. But we could move forward if given approval. We can start ordering the, the equipment that Al knows that we would need, which is a long-term out, out there. But we still won't have that gap of having no service. Our campers will have service at some level. And so we've put it to get, I mean, we can, we can mask over the little interruption, and that'll cover for a year or so while we, while we get prepared to, to get the equipment onboard and go ahead and do the work.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second that.
Okay.
With lost revenue.
Yes.
Yes, of course.
It's been moved and seconded. Any more comments or questions?
No, I just made a note, Mike tried and said it's a good one, so I'll mark that down.
So did some of the rest of us. Please answer as your name is called.
I'll keep a lot of the notes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Jelka.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Little.
No.
Layland.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I know last week, I was gonna say, anybody have other projects? Otherwise, you've got some.
Nope, hit your list.
To look at? Okay.
Make some hay.
I was gonna say, last week, we had the discussion on the evidence intake building, and I know Mark was here and made a great case for us, as he's always done. He's probably, nobody's probably been more passionate and been, more updates of the Board provided. But we talked about too, that Blackhawk Gaming had a timeline of May tenth that needed a decision on whether or not we extend, they needed an extension, or where we were at with the project. And so that puts it back on our plate, I guess, a little bit to answer, discuss, or whatever we'd like to do going forward.
Yeah, I've got some comments I'll start with. First of all, I'll say right out, at this point, I do not support the project. And when I was, like I said, I'm a taxpayer sitting on this Board, is how I view my role. But if I give an answer, if I take a position, I'm gonna tell you why I'm taking that position. First of all, this project started at seven hundred fifty thousand. It's currently at one point five million. Two hundred fifty thousand of that is the gaming grant, or approximately, but we're still sitting above a million dollars. We have been told it's necessary. We hear that a lot from department heads, and it's for us to evaluate, because I remember when I was the police chief, I would say that same thing to the city council. I rode for the brand, and I, I didn't, I, my department was the number one priority. I really didn't care about the other departments. Whether that was right or wrong, I was the police chief. That was my attitude. I'm a county Board supervisor. I'm responsible for every single citizen in Blackhawk County, whether they voted for me or not, whether they're Republican, Democrat, Independent, whatever. My attitude is I represent all of them. It's good to see the representatives from Gilbertville here, because I'm gonna get to our smaller communities down the road as well. I support their project. The only question for me is how much? I want to pump, I want to give them some money for their project. But as a Board, we also have to keep in mind, if we give Gilbertville money, we have to give LaPorte City money, because they have a similar project going on. And I'll discuss it more again later, of course, but their city's footprint, the services they're providing goes way beyond that footprint. And the services they're providing are for many, many, many of our citizens. So we need to push some money toward them. My biggest concern with the Blackhawk County evidence building was sustainability. Matter of fact, at the April twenty fifth meeting, I addressed that concern, and the answer I received was, you know, I said the facility's gonna need equipment, maintenance, and utilities for sustainability. Herbst said all the equipment is included in the one point five million dollar price tag, and the only ongoing maintenance cost is for electricity, no additional staff is necessary. I believe no additional staff is necessary. But when it comes to the ongoing maintenance, there's gonna be electronic equipment out there. Again, I was, I was involved in law enforcement for thirty years. Whatever equipment we had required annual maintenance, we're experiencing with IT now. We have some significant maintenance costs that are gonna cost us annually. In the application for the gaming money, it was indicated that the sixty forty fund was going to support the ongoing maintenance, or what's necessary for this project. I believe it was less than six months ago, we were told that the sheriff's office may not be able to, or may be unwilling to collect that money. Yet they want to use that money to support this project. I heard from Waterloo police officers that, you know, we're not gonna use it. It's inconvenient for us. It's, it's, it's in Raymond. We're not gonna go all the way out there. So I approached the police sergeant, a police captain, a detective. I explained the project and said, are you guys gonna use this? I said, absolutely not. We got a facility right across the street. And I know they don't, that's not the perfect facility for them. It wasn't the perfect facility when I was the police chief for ten years, but it's a facility that they're able to utilize. In the past year, how many times have the other communities come to us, stood at that podium and says, we would like money, we would like money, we would like money? We did get letters from communities saying, we support this project. Well, how much are you gonna provide, put toward the project to support it? Now, I'm not beating up on Gilbertville. I'm not beating up on LaPorte City, because I told you at the beginning, I support those projects. Matter of fact, they have evidence, storage, space in their facility, and I assume processing, because it's convenient. It's not efficient for, you know, police departments like their own facilities of this type, because it's just not convenient if you need to go a significant distance. Waterloo cops, Waterloo cops don't want to send two or three cops out to Raymond, to this facility. It's not efficient. It costs money. They have their own facility. They want to take care of their own evidence. We did get a list of case reports from Blackhawk County Sheriff's Department where this facility may need to be utilized. I think in twenty twenty two, it was eleven cases, and some of these were in the cities. I don't believe it's a necessity. So I do not support this project. I'm willing to vote against it. I told you why. There may be differences in opinion, so be it. But as a taxpayer sitting on that, this Board, that's where I stand right now, and I gave you the reasons why.
Thank you. And you, you want to make any comments or questions?
I mean, it's similar to, I speak, it's, and I agree with, yeah, and, you know, frustrated, it's, it's double what the cost was when we initially considered it. And I've just got other, I mean, I'm gonna keep saying, I need to get through the health clinic before I get through anything else, because that's what's most in the spirit of this legislation, most in the spirit of this funding, and is a greater need than, than any of these others for this community. And so until we're through that, it's hard for me to consider other, other big-ticket stuff.
And I'll just reiterate, and I know, Nate, you've heard this before too, as Mark, I said, initially, when the project came before us, we thought, or the sheriff's department thought, it could be a public health response. And I questioned at that time, I didn't see the public health aspect of it at all. And I know we had a difference of opinion between the sheriff, even, and I. And then later, when we contracted with Baker Tilly, and we did the questionnaire and that type of thing, then it ultimately resulted in them responding as well, that it didn't fit the categories for the ARPA funds, other than if we use lost revenue. And that was, I think, like in November or December, something like that of last year. And at that point, it kind of changed the project for me as well, a little bit more. It wasn't public health, but we said, we were, that's, I think, maybe when we put in on hold, because it was like, if it's gonna go into our lost revenue or revenue replacement category, we wanted to see what other projects that were gonna come, need to come from there, and what we wanted to spend the funding on, and was this a priority then or not. So that somewhat changed the project kind of parameters for me. And not that I was supportive of it anyway, but I just thought, when it came out of the lost revenue category, if we would have come to the point, because I think when we first heard the twenty five million, it was like, wow, how will we spend that, and what will we spend it on? When we started getting more and more projects, then it was like, how will we prioritize, and will this be one of them? So it was fine in the hold. But, yeah, for me, then, at this point, now that we need to make a decision for, and it's difficult when you have a partner that's kind of came to the aid of a project, to say they would supply two hundred thousand dollars for the project, but ultimately, the price tag on this, and that I don't feel it's a COVID response, related response for public health either. So that's where my vote will be, no, too.
Okay, if I can. Obviously, this is Captain Herbst's project. I'm not nearly involved in it, as he has.
No, and thank you for being here for it.
But, yeah, he couldn't be here today, so I wanted to step up. Just a couple of the points that have been made, and again, I'm not gonna belabor it, but, you know, Dan, you said you've spoken to some people over there. Mark's been in contact with Chief Leibold and with Sergeant Devine, who's over investigation, or heavily involved in investigations and evidence processing. I know they've both said that they would definitely be in favor of it. And as far as, it's not a evidence storage. Waterloo's not gonna be taking every piece of evidence out. Gilbert's not gonna be taking every piece of evidence out. It's a, it's a processing facility. I don't know if Captain Herbst's mentioned, before insurance shut our building down, so now we have no place to process that stuff. The last case that was, our investigators worked there, was a juvenile female that had been sexually assaulted. Fortunately, we were able to process that car and find, work the evidence against that. Without that right now, and Mark talked in depth about how we, based on what our insurance company says, we can't go to Waterloo's facility, Cedar Falls facility, anyone else's facility. It's gotta be someplace with the filtration system, everything else that we can work at. When the parents of that sixteen-year-old girl call up and ask if we've found the monster that did this to their little girl, if we've got the evidence on him, I don't want to have to tell them, well, we're, we're still waiting on it. We have to wait until North Liberty can get us in, until Ankeny can work us into theirs. We need our own facility to be able to do that. I know you're saying this is more of a want than a need. I would argue, we need this facility to process things. We may not be out there every day processing things, no. But we need a facility to process our own things, to take our own bad people off the street, to help solve crimes for our citizens. It's not just a sheriff's office thing. It's, it's a citizens in Blackhawk County thing. We need to be able to process evidence. We need to be able to solve crimes. We can't wait until North Liberty, or Marion, or somebody else has a facility available for us.
Well, sometimes one has to, but I was gonna say, I, we, I think we threw out some ideas when it was like, as far as could, maybe we could provide some equipment to the Waterloo facility, and that facility could be shared by the county and all the, I mean, it's just thoughts.
And I know Mark did actually approach Chief Leibold with that, and he said they would, if we want to throw money into their building, they certainly wouldn't turn it down. However, he said it's an old building as it is, and it's not a very good facility, so it's not a facility worth throwing money into, basically is what he said. But if that's the only option, that's it.
Well, it's not the only option, but I said, it was, as Dan mentioned, too, sharing of the facility costs, when you're talking one five or seven hundred and fifty. If their letters of support, as I said, are pretty easy to write, and we've all done that, and doesn't mean they're not sincere, but if it's a facility that all the communities in Blackhawk County truly believe is needed and would help them, maybe it's something we ask.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, we all.
And I'm not putting you on the spot. I know it's not your project.
And then again, I would reiterate to you on the, on the cost doubling, the first cost was an estimate and most of that increase has come because some of the supervisors said, well, if we're going to do this, let's do it right. That was when Mark upped the price on it, was at the insistence of the board.
Well, not the insistence. I wouldn't say insistence. It was probably just our discussion.
Yeah, okay. But now it's being used against us because the price has increased, even though it was some members of the board's suggestion.
And as you understand too, when we started with the ARPA projects and dollars and how we were going to allocate those, there were so many projects that are on that list. So at some point we had to prioritize as well, so.
I'm ready to put this dog to bed and make a motion.
I didn't know, yeah, okay. I was going to say if Tom or.
Well, I, I, I guess I would just like to maybe interject here. Uh, I, I can obviously read the room enough to, uh, to count those votes. I, I do think it might make sense for us to delay this one week so that we can hear from Mark. We had instructed, or we had suggested that they, that Mark does reach out to other cities, other entities that did offer those letters of support, um, without hearing if sort of what that process has been. I know I've talked with Mark a couple of times this last week about this project. I am supportive on some level. I think 1.5 with an, with an additional 200 from gaming is, is, um, it's too high of a number, uh, but I do think that there's value in us being leaders here. Um, the, the issues that were, the county was made aware of with the structure and our ability to process, uh, evidence because of that. I think it's important for us to, to go ahead and, and really test this thing out, see what's possible. Um, and if, if that means, you know, we hear back from Mark in a week, um, now folks are just going to be a, a no because they're a no, then I guess that is what it is. I'm not, I'm not a no for the sake of being a no, I'm not a yes for the sake of being yes. I think there's value in this project and because I think there's value in the project, I think there's value in waiting one week so that the point person on this project can speak to some of the alternatives that he's been able to identify, um, as he was recommended to do, I think, uh, from the board.
Well, and just to say, this isn't something that we've done quickly. I was going to say, this is something over a period of 15 months that we've had discussion on and gone in depth quite often. So it's, yes, not just a quick decision and we're not, I want you to know for certain, I know I can speak for myself only, that I'm not saying no just to say no. It's been a position that I've evaluated and taken and throughout the course, so.
You know, we've been, we've been kicking this can down the alley every week. Even by, um, I talked to a couple of people the other day, even by their own admission, they want the board to act one way or the other so we can move on. Looking at the projects overall, um, Dan had mentioned the Gilbertville and the LaPorte projects, they're all good projects and I hope they get it done, but one thing I'll never do is, uh, support any county money. ARPA was given to the county and we're turning down some of our county departments. And I'm not going to give the money to the outside when we have departments. I do think, I agree with Chris, the true motion of COVID is, um, Health Department. And, um, I'm not so sure the lion's share of the money should be spent at the Health Department. That's the COVID issue right there. But, um, all the cities got ARPA funds and it was per capita. Obviously we got more than what the cities did other than Waterloo. And, um, I was on a city council to build a new public safety building, fire and police. We didn't come to the county. We bonded for it, paid for it with taxpayers in the city. So I think that's their obligation. Our obligation is take care of our county departments. We've turned down projects from certain departments. As far as this one here, every week, something different comes up and says, well, let's, let's wait a week or some. I, I feel one way or the other, we need to move on and, uh, that way we know what we've got money and what we can allocate to the Health Department. So I, I think we need to vote on this today and just move on.
I do, um, a little bit to, to Tavis's point, it, in the conversations last week, it, I mean, it did feel like there was instruction to have one more round of conversations with other potential partners, so I wouldn't mind waiting one week until Mark is here. Um, but it's, to me, the, what would be viable would be, um, and more cost savings if, if there is some kind of way to share a facility, an improved facility with Waterloo. Cause, cause the one point, the, the 1.5 million is just, is just going to be hard compared and stacked up against everything else.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion to remove it from the list.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. If there's no further discussion or comments, please answer as your name is called.
Delka?
Yes.
Paul?
No.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Oh.
Bailey?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there other projects? I don't know, is Rory in the room today? I don't know that I see him. Okay, great. I was just wondering if there's any type of, um, update and not to be extensive on the projects. You've got some items on the list and I think they said on there, they'd not been requested or, or they'd not been reviewed or?
Yeah, um, two of the items that we just kicked out for review, both, uh, the elections, professional service RFP, uh, for their elections relocation, um, plus the remodel in the basement, uh, that is with, uh, both, uh, Grant and Mike for review. So we're hoping that, uh, we can get the date set on that. Um, also the treasures department RFP, uh, has been completed. Um, that also is out for review. Um, and then I know that, uh, we are going to be reviewing, uh, the Health Department over at the Pine, Pinecrest facility, uh, in a little bit more detail next week. So hopefully, uh, we'll, uh, be able to, uh, at some point get the Space Committee together and, uh, talk about that in more detail. So that's currently where we're at. With regards to the HVAC systems for, uh, upgrades for, uh, the jail, the courthouse in Pinecrest, uh, those are, uh, in process. We're looking at, uh, making that, uh, one large application, one project to provide us consistency with, uh, uh, equipment, software, hardware, what have you, uh, throughout all three facilities. And really, uh, where we're at right now with the Health Department is going to kind of guide us in how that application, uh, will look once we submit that to Baker Tilly. So.
I knew you had some items, like I said, there were maintenance items on here and I just didn't know the status of those, so appreciate.
Yep, thank you.
Linda Hensman's project, did you mention that Rory as far as, or, because I was going to say hers is very close to.
Yeah, uh, that, uh, is one of the RFPs that are under review right now, uh, for the professional services part of it. Uh, so that along with the elections.
Both of those, okay. So we'd probably see them in the next week or so here.
I would hope by the end of this week, uh, I, I haven't had any feedback yet or any suggestions on changes, uh, with those RFPs. Uh, they're fairly basic. Uh, at this point, we're just looking for, uh, designs, uh, professional services with regards to contract administration, project cost and, and, and those types of things. So, uh, we're hopeful, hopeful to get that out here very soon.
Okay, thank you.
I, I think it's realistic to have these by the end of the week. We, we got them, uh, yesterday and they, uh, we've already, Grant's already taken a look at his and given me his notes here just this morning and so they're moving.
Okay, thank you.
And they follow the form closely.
Yeah.
Are there many other projects that we think we need to, that we haven't put in the process yet and moved through the Baker Tilly or the committee or?
The big one that is moving through, Rory already mentioned it, but it's the big one moving through Baker Tilly right now is Health Department. And the, uh, the reason I think that Rory wants to bring this to Space Committee is because we want to find out before we get it in final form, we want to know exactly what type of a project we're envisioning in terms of a departmental remodel. It's, it's a remodel of the, uh, of the existing facility at Pinecrest is my understanding and it has to be compared to at least a couple of alternatives because of the fact that it's, uh, it's over that million dollar mark. But having said that, um, there, it's, it's a complex one.
It is, it is. I think we all agree and Chris, I know you've wanted a new building or something, a different building, so that's probably one of the alternatives I would imagine we'd look at too at the same time. It's not just to say it's just that building.
Yep, and then the other, uh, the other big one, uh, we've had a, a meeting via teams with Baker Tilly, uh, I believe it was last week on, is the, uh, is the Cedar Valley Nature Trail, which as you know, has been under consideration for a long time. We thought that there might be some new ARPA flex guidance, which they keep pushing, putting it off. The Treasury keeps putting off releasing that guidance. So finally we said, well, let's just, uh, get this justified the way we thought we were going to justify it to begin with. Baker Tilly has prepared a draft justification that's been reviewed. We had a meeting with Baker Tilly last week about that and Baker Tilly is going to make some additional, uh, points in it. Uh, they wanted some of our feedback on those additional points. Uh, but in, in addition to that, I had, uh, one idea, I know Mike and Sri had a couple of ideas and have provided them with some additional information. Uh, for example, there's, they've been provided an overlay map that shows where, um, accesses to our trail system are and how that might, how that, uh, shows with, uh, with qualified census tracts. So those, uh, those poverty zones and those other affected areas, uh, that are important under ARPA. So I, I think we're probably a week to two weeks off from a, from a final written justification on that, but that's just a prediction.
Fair enough.
Is that a fair statement, Mike?
Yep.
And then there's also a couple of Washburn sewer projects too.
And that was one of the questions I have today. It was like, we've got like $800,000 in projects, uh, that are a project at Washburn. And my question is not probably fairly asked of you, but of maybe Ben at some point in time. We talked about having to meet with Washburn residents and talk to them about service fees for going forward. So we fill those coffers instead of complete everything from that as we go ahead and do these projects. Do we have any idea of the timeline it would take since we know those dollars have to be spent and have a timeline commitment? What it will take, how much time it will take to complete this work?
I, well, depending on how busy the vendors are, I think it could be completed by the December 2026 deadline. Um, I would like to talk to you, there's several projects on here that I think, um, might be helpful to hire some kind of engineering firm to make sure we're doing the right thing and to actually spec out what we're going to do. Um, so if that would, if you would agree with that, I will go ahead and get that process started. And, and we do need to meet with the citizens because I do, I do think we need to talk about a rate increase just for what I'm going to call the regular operating maintenance budget. We, you know, they've, we have not been setting aside funding for those residents to do any of these repairs. So we're very fortunate that ARPA, um, has sewer infrastructure as one of the primary allowed categories, which is why I think these projects were suggested and, yeah, we do need to keep them moving along.
So an engineer would come in and take a look at, evaluate all these for us on whether they're necessary or not before we get deep in the weeds.
Tour the system and if they see things that we don't know about coming down, you know, new DNR regulations, whatever they might be, so that we know that we're spending our money in the right places. That, that would be my thought about doing it because I'm certainly not a sewer expert and I don't know, um, if we have anyone else on staff that wants to step up to that, that'd be great.
Well, and, and to really ask Ben to do it is probably kind of a, I was going to say, yeah, to take.
It's a little.
Doesn't work well usually. The person doing the work and then assessing the work that needs to be done is difficult. So.
Yes, that's why I felt we might be better off to have an independent party do that.
Do you have any idea, I suppose, on the cost in that? It would be ARPA covered, I know, so that would help, but.
But I don't have an idea on the cost. I, I'd like to hope it would be minimal, but I don't know that. I, I need to explore that if you're interested in doing that. And I can get some of those proposals and bring that back or whatever you'd like to see.
Yeah, that'd be great. Maybe we could just talk about it next week and then move forward if that's the case.
Yeah, I think that's good.
It's good to have this AARP funding on the agenda every week.
Yeah.
Especially at this point.
That's a great time. Yeah, yeah, every week. Alex makes, makes progress. That's great. So those are the, my question on Washburn was, I think, the last one I had at least. Does anybody else have comments, questions or?
Gilbertville, I want to hear from them. I forget what the amount of their ask was.
Sure.
Refresh my memory.
Bring us up to date on what you've received and.
Yes.
Any changes?
Scott Becker, I'm the, uh, Mayor Pro Tem for City of Gilbert. Uh, we had a funding request for Blackhawk County Gaming as well. Um, we had asked for half a million dollars and we only got 225 from our request from them. Um, we had asked for 600,000 from the county. That was about the remaining part of the project after, if we had gotten the, um, that we would share with the city. So, um, obviously we're going to be short some funds again and, and Mr. Little's comment about the, the bonding and funding, we're, we're maxed out with what we've got for the project. We can't borrow anymore. We're against our limits for what we can bond for the city. Don't have a lot of, don't have a lot of tax revenue, don't have a lot of, um, leeway there, but, uh, 1.2 with the five that we passed was maxing us out at that time, so.
Well, I certainly support their project. The only question for me, as I've said, is how much I'm willing to support. But whatever we give you, I'm willing to give LaPorte City as well.
So you got LaPorte City, you got Dunkerton, you got all of them, Dan. There is requests from every city in Blackhawk County.
For the public safety facility.
Oh, just for.
Yeah, for public safety.
Not necessarily our community.
And, you know, one of our.
No.
The reason why we came for you guys as much is because of Washburn. I mean, we, that's part of our, you know, we have a lot of, uh, territory that's part of the county that's, you know, not involved with the city, you know? 90% of our calls are outside the City of Gilbert providing coverage and that's the reason why we came to Blackhawk County supervisor.
Right, and the challenge we're facing, and this has been an issue for me for five, six years now, I was, I was aware of it before that, is EMS services for rural residents. That's a concern in the entire state. And I don't know what the solution is, but when I see stuff like this, I support it because we need it. Because as a society, we're so mobile today, me and my family, 15 passenger van, usually I have it full. If I'm in your jurisdiction and I crash, I want your services. That's what every resident in Blackhawk County needs and deserves. We're better off than many, many counties in the state of Iowa when it comes to EMS, EMS services in rural areas of our county, but we're far from where I'd like to see us.
Does our township trustees, do they contract for, um, services?
Yes, they do. And we've maxed out on the, just our general budget maxed out with the township trustees give us for, uh, support. You know, just, that's just to maintain the equipment, the building, the training, obviously the training and, um, those related expenses have gone through the roof. So we have to do as well to be in the volunteer fire department, we have a lot more, um, regulatory things that we have to file that we did five and 10 years ago and just as far as what they have to do. So that budget gets ate up really quick. And then, um, just to let you know, we do, uh, we do have a fund that we put, uh, some money every year in for vehicles, just try to keep, you know, up to date, but, uh, any excess funds every year that we have goes to is our vehicle replacement. And we're talking maybe five or $10,000 within our budget. I mean, it's not a ton of money, but, you know, five, $10,000, whatever excess we have in our budget, our budget's only $100,000 to begin with. Um, so that's, uh, that goes back into our vehicle replacement fund just to keep our fire equipment up to date and everything else. So we've been very fortunate. Gaming has helped us through the years buy some of our equipment and keep us up to date. Um, so.
And you mentioned it was 1.2 that you, I think you were remaining and now with the 200 from gaming, a million dollars.
Right.
Is where you're looking, so.
Well, no, no, the, the 1.2 is with, if we got the half a million dollar grant from gaming, so.
It was with that.
Yes.
Okay, so you still need the 1-2.
We still need the 1-2 plus whatever else we can help with because now we're one, we're 1-4 to 1-5 short now from what we were originally.
Scott, uh, did, did, uh, what kind of money did you guys get from, from ARPA? And are ARPA dollars being used on this project?
100% of our ARPA dollars being used is about, uh, $100,000 and 100% is being put in this project. this project. Every penny.
So you've given this project priority, obviously.
Yes. Fire department's been fundraising for six or seven years, big time. I mean, we're doing the best they can. They've been pulling in $40,000 every time they do it. So it's been a very successful fundraiser campaign, but it's a long ways to get to $2.9 million in the cost. So and we're continuing to have meetings with the engineers and the designers just to see if we can cut costs across the board wherever we can. But, you know, we're, we're getting close to the point, we have to do something to get our money that we've gotten from the USDA program. And there has to be some timelines on that. So that's one of the reasons why Jeff and I came today, just kind of see where we're at in the project because we've got some timelines to meet with the USDA. Fortunately, Congressman Henson's office got us some funds, so.
What was your original plans on funding for this project when you guys first started it? I mean, were you talking about coming to the county a year ago, two years ago, or what?
When we first started the project pre pandemic, the cost of the building was in the 1.5 million dollar range, 1.3. We knew we were applying for this funding from the, from the USDA and where there's going to be fundraising and bonding, but obviously with the cost going through the roof since the pandemic, its costs are, caused us to have to look at other sources as well.
Yeah, I think you're great. I know a lot of people in Gilbertville, I know people on the fire department and it's a great organization and everything. I just struggle with, we're dealing with our own county departments. We just turned down a major 1.5 million dollar project that they insisted was needed. And, and here we are talking about giving money outside our own departments and we haven't even finished yet. I have no idea where we're going to end up with the health department. And would you guys come to us if it wouldn't have been for COVID money? Or is that the reason why you guys came?
Well, we probably wouldn't have came to you because our costs would have been in line, we wouldn't have needed the additional funding.
Well, we had that same cost on building things.
Costs have doubled since in the last three years from initial estimates.
Sure. It's terrible. I understand. But we have that same cost at the county when we build things, renovations, the health department, clinic, all that's going to cost us probably 60, 50% more due to what's happened. The same boat you ran and every other towns in that boat. No, I feel for you guys, I really do. I've been through it with my town and we were fortunate to be able to cover it and bond for it. And but, well, I'll tell you, it's, it's tough when we're still working on our own departments. I mean, we've had so many requests, not only from the cities, but from you and I, from Cedar Falls. It, it just never stops. And like I said, we haven't even gone through our own departments.
Well, I understand where you're coming from on that. I totally get it. And like, you know, our biggest, our biggest point is, is just because so much of our stuff is outside the, outside the city that we, that's why we're asking for the help. I mean, the bottom line is it was just for the city projects within ourselves, we wouldn't be here asking. But, you know, 87% of our population or whatever the number is off the top of my head is not within the city, it's within the county. So that's the reason why we're coming to ask.
How many townships do you contract with Pointer and who else?
We cover Cedar and we cover part of Pointer and southern half of Pointer and part of Fox.
And they tax for fire protection, is that correct?
Correct. And we've maxed, they're maxed out on all their protection. In fact, the city covers a portion of theirs because they don't have enough, what they get for, we get for fire revenue, doesn't cover our cost.
Didn't they see something that the legislator, something that's changed as far as township trustees can tax for EMS services or something?
I don't know if that, it was talked about, Tom. I don't know if it changed or not.
And they're still in session.
Yeah. And I had talked to one of the, a member of the State House and they said too, that they have not changed that in years. And I think it's been some discussion points, but Tom, they have not acted on it, which is really difficult for all the volunteers, especially the rural fire departments, just because we're using the same rates that we had. I've been on the city council on and off for past 30 years and I don't think that rate has changed the amount, they've never changed that.
EM, EMS is a problem throughout the whole state of Iowa, really on our rural counties. And to be honest with you, I believe, I don't know in Evansdale right now, but we didn't have EMS on staff because we couldn't afford it. I don't know what the situation now is over there, but it's, you guys aren't unique. It's all over rural areas and it's a shame. I agree with Dan 100%, but I just don't know. I, I don't know. I really don't.
In fact, we contract with Evansdale for our ambulance services right now, so.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's all mutual aid, right?
Right, right.
Evansdale comes, Waterloo comes. I don't know, Raymond does or not.
Yeah. I do think too, as your, your point earlier, like you said, you're talking public safety buildings and that type of thing. I do think other communities will have needs that they feel is as great. So we will need to consider what we do for everyone, but that's just my.
Yeah, and we understand that. We were just, like I said, we were just, hey, let's come out and see what's going on, where we're at in the process and, you know, our timeline, just you have to, Jeff was the end of the year.
No, I'm glad you're here. I was going to say it was good.
September 30th.
September 30th, we have to have something in place for the USDA portion of that. So that's kind of why we're, we're asking and checking in and doing our follow ups.
And by something in place, you mean you have to be, like breaking ground by September 30th or like?
We have to have the progress started, yes, and that would be the plan. We would, we would break ground by then. But like some of the grants, you can't get any, you can't start the project before you, you know, you can't get the grant approved if you started the project. So hands are kind of tied, you know? Our timeline is that, yes, we would start breaking ground this fall. If we, if we were in place and it's going to go for a bit hopefully in here in June.
So is there a dollar amount you have to be at to start that? Or can you start it now?
We have to be basically, we have to have, I believe, 75, 80% of the funding in place in order to even start the project.
Do you have other requests out as well?
Yes, we have a few smaller ones, yes. Some local, Mid-American Energy and Farmer State Bank has given some money, they have a branch there. And we had a couple of the grants that we've been turned down on, but those are a couple that we're stuck after yet, so.
As I said, the only question for me is the amount.
Yeah, I know.
And I asked with 600,000. And I understand where you're coming from, but anything to help would be greatly appreciated, so.
And just.
You guys do a great job over there.
What, Tom?
I commend you for everything that you do. Mayor Tommy, actually, I picked his name out of a hat for mayor.
Oh, that's right.
I remember that, I was there.
Yeah, that's right.
Anyway, he owes me on that one there, maybe he doesn't.
Depends on the day whether he thinks he owes you or not.
Yeah, really. It's a tough spot for us, it really is, because you know darn well, we're going to have the other cities coming too. If it isn't public safety, it'll be something else.
And I am with Dan on this, I'm thinking that, again, I'm a broken record, I want to get through the health clinic first and see where those dollar, what that is really going to come in at so that we have a clearer picture of what we have left that we're working with and then factoring in that the yes, we will then have, this will trigger more requests from other cities and just figuring out what the amount is that, that I want to be in at and whether it's going to be an amount that makes you happy or not. But it's, because it is a great project. I love visiting Gilbertville, not just because of the awesome meat locker, but just the people out there. And so I do want to see us in at some level, but, but hopefully sooner than, we're nearing the point that we're going to have a clearer picture on, on where the health clinic's going to come in at. But, and hopefully that's going to work with, with your timeline too.
That'd be great. I'm saying, we just want to check in, see what's going on, so, and just trying to stay on top of things, so.
We appreciate you being here.
Thanks, appreciate it. Let me speak as well.
Thank you.
Let's spend all our ARPA money tomorrow.
Yeah, and move on. If you can do that, yeah. Okay, anything else on the list or questions, comments, any projects? Tavis, Tom, anything on the list, ARPA projects that you'd like to discuss today?
I would just echo Chris's point about public health building and, you know, ARPA uses there. As soon as we can get some realistic number that we can really pencil in there, it would help alleviate a lot of, I think some of that, not hand wringing, but it's, it causes a pause in this process because we don't want to get too far ahead of our skis, so.
It is, but it's the largest one probably, yeah, project that we've got with a lot of parts on it. So, yeah. Point taken. Anything, Tom? More?
Comments or?
Anything more? No, yeah, I just meant anything more, he wanted to comment on that. Is there anything you'd like to say or before we move out of work session?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. Great. All right, item 10, any reports or information from the board?
I do wonder if maybe we need, because it seems to be a recurring issue of code enforcement issues and not getting kind of timely, timely response on it. I know that I've felt like it, I don't feel like much of a priority when I'm, you know, calling in one and, you know, I would ideally, if a citizen calls me up, I want to make something happen and make something happen right away rather than feel like I'm at the bottom of a queue, trying to get answers for this person because they get frustrated, I get frustrated. So I think we need to, you know, examine something different that, because it just doesn't seem like that the code enforcement violations from the county level get much priority.
Right, I agree. And I know Tom's going to add to this because he's got some great information on the issue on Gilbertville Road. And I can't believe it's gone on this long and I just feel, I feel for the citizens because I think it gets to a point where we gotta enforce the law. And somebody needs to crap or get off the pot and this issue needs to be taken care of. Because jeepers man, 15 months this has been going on? It's getting, I can just imagine how frustrated the citizens are, not just the Youngbloods, but the others in the area where they're seeing no resolution and no progress. And we need to do something.
So come, that's Tom, or is there something you?
Yeah. Mr. Youngblood called me yesterday because I had heard about it with Seth. By his own admission, there was some words and I called Seth and Seth hung up on him for the mere fact that he was cussing at him. And I did tell Seth that as a county employee, which essentially is when he's doing our code enforcement or planning and zoning, that he does not take that, he can come to the board of supervisors, that's our job to do that. This whole thing has frustrated myself. I didn't agree with the extension. I don't believe there should have been one, but we've decided to move on with it. From what I understand from talking to Seth, the berm is done. It's, the seating's supposed to be completed here in the next, this week or next week. And it doesn't, Mr. Youngblood doesn't agree with Seth on the berm, but it's done. And then the other issues, I do know for a fact that two of the planning and zoning did go out at night, different parts of the day on that one establishment on the trucks. And the times they were out there, they didn't observe anything. The issue on the lean too, that was a condition from the board adjustments. Yes, that has to be tore down. It should have been tore down a long time ago. And again, we're being told it'll be done within the week. I had a pretty good conversation with Tim and another issue is a neighbor that built a shed or, or a building illegally. And he was told that he's going to have to bring it to code because he didn't get any permits on anything. And it was unfortunate and I kind of talked to Tim and straightened him a little bit. He's the one that told him that he thought he didn't need a permit. And I kind of told him, really, Tim, that's not your position. So if this guy built something and didn't get a permit, guess what? He's got to follow the rules. If it has to come down, it comes down. And so there's a couple of issues going on out there. I don't think DNR is going to get involved with the berm because I don't think it's a true dyke. So it'll, it'll be up to our people to do that. But as far as code enforcement over the years, you know, the true fact is we are secondary over there when it comes to code enforcement. They have quite a bit of work themselves and I think we're kind of an afterthought. And maybe we need to start looking. I don't know. Dan's done a little research on it. And it, it's tough because you got to have a planning and zoning staff. I know there's been some issues, Dan had a call on codes. We follow Waterloo's codes because they do the permits for us, the inspections. So when they pass a new code, we adopt it also. And, and we've had some blowback from, I'll give you an example, electrician that retired and wanted to do some work on the side for a neighbor and he felt he didn't have to get the permits and stuff and that's not the case. So I don't know, there's a lot of issues. I feel we can work through it, but it would do the county no good to have a full-time code enforcement. There's not enough work for that. It has to be contracted to another city. The P and Z is the same way. We've had more rezonings the last year and this year for building houses in the rural area I've ever seen. I was going to call the other day and ask them, has something changed? Because we didn't, never used to get them that often and now it seems like every week we get two or three, so. But I think we can check around and see if there's another city like Cedar Falls that would be interested if the board chooses. But this situation out there is going to have to get remedy real quick. Otherwise, we need to follow our ordinances that we have in place.
Can we put this on the agenda for next week? I mean, the whole, everything you talked about, Tom, I mean, the services we're currently receiving, is there a better option? I mean, we even had a zoning commissioner, a very well articulated, he articulated his concerns incredibly well. And these are issues that we're involved in so much as board supervisors, sometimes we overlook problems that exist until they're put right in front of our face. And, you know, I've gotten to a point in life where I have to, whatever anybody tells me anymore, I have to put a screen on it. I'm wondering, okay, what are their biases? Why do they feel this way? But what I told this individual is articulate it, send it to me, I'll get it to the entire board. I think between this issue we currently have down south of us and some of our challenges with getting enforcement from code enforcement, I think it'd be worthy to, worthy to put it on the agenda and let's tackle it.
Has any board member actually looked at a bill for City of Waterloo for planning and zoning and code enforcement?
Not me and shame on me. I, I, I'm curious what we spend annually.
You just have, you just have to look at the breakdown of the bill. It'll surprise you on how it's being paid and the increases on it. And it comes monthly. I don't know if it comes monthly or what, but take, have Michelle pull the bill for everybody, take a look at it once.
Yeah, if I could, this is Rory giving, maintenance superintendent, if I can just speak to that and just to our current procedures when it comes to code enforcement. In the maintenance department, we do have a, a document that as we receive code enforcement request.
Oh, it's not on the agenda. Recommend, see. So what Grant's recommending is we wait until it's on the agenda next week, I assume.
Since it's not on the agenda that we wait and not do that, since others might have input, I would think the City of Waterloo might also have input.
Okay.
But not, not to cut you off, but that's the reason, yeah. Just keep everything legal.
I think Rory ought to do all the code enforcement.
Yep, good, okay.
Back up to that mic.
Is that a motion?
I meant just to review the bills. So you see how it's made up, not necessarily when we pay it or anything. I just want you to take a look at the breakdown of how it comes to us.
Yeah, I'm curious so we can get those for next week.
And the different staff that are involved and that type of thing, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Is there anything else to come before the board?
I know your meeting's been pretty long, Linda.
I know. It's not three hours at least today.
There have been questions about the 64, do we need to revisit that?
Well, we certainly can add that to an agenda if you want, like discussion.
Yes, because there's been policy questions.
Okay. We can add that too, unless there's any reason to delay and we could add that for a discussion next week. All right. Anything else to add to next week's agenda? Anything lengthier? Can we make next week's meeting longer? ARPA continues to be on, we'll have any questions or concerns? All right, super.